Welcome everyone to the Village of Armband Planning Board Meeting for November 1, 2022. The first item on the agenda is all continued business. Alan Decotes, Liz Mazzarella, Seth Stikle, and Mark Reminski, consulting engineer representing agents for 56 Livingston Street. And it's a final site plan review and historic demolition permit, fascial removal and area variance granted. So Ryan, the ZDA granted the fascial removal?
No, they're going to be air.
Area variance. You have something about the fascial removal?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Seth Stikle. I work with Mark Reminski, DB LSPC. We're here this evening to represent Alan Decotes and Elizabeth Mazzarella, owner and applicants of 56 Livingston Street in the Village of Armband. The parcel is located on the south side of Livingston Street. The only change that has occurred since the last time we presented in front of this board is that there has been a slight change in the size of the shed. The shed has gone from a 10 by 15, 150 square foot shed to a 13 and a half by 16 and a half, 223 square feet. We note that due to that location, we needed to shift the shed to the north. That actually decreased the patio area, so overall we have a reduction in hard surface area taken on that change. That's the only change that has occurred. We did go to the meeting with the zoning board of appeals and received approval from the zoning board of appeals. And we're here this evening to discuss any additional site plan comments that this board may have, as well as the historic demolition permit and declassification of the 189 square foot addition on the back that is the year of the building.
Okay, so top one shed. Go. Oh, you're right. Go down. It's the set 1025 permit. That's just the cover letter. We have to go back.
So there were some changes made. I believe windows, looking over the neighbor on the building. What changed on the plan?
Would you like me to walk through that? Certainly, absolutely. So before, we had gotten a positive recommendation for, from this board to move forward with the ZDA, we made some adjustments to the plan. I think it's easiest to take a look at the renderings as they detail those fairly well. Previously, we were asking for a three and a half foot relief on the west side yard setback. That's this area here. This is the existing structure, and this is the proposed addition. What has changed in that side yard setback is we actually moved the building back one foot, so we asked for only two and a half feet of relief from the zoning board of appeals.
That one?
Additionally, that west, no, don't worry. West side yard.
Right there.
This is it?
56.
The one I have on?
Nope. That's from August.
This one?
Nope.
This one? Thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome.
Those are the site plans by the engineer, and I have architecture. So along this west side yard, also one of the changes that was made, we received feedback from the neighbors. We addressed that feedback and the neighbors. In the submission package that was detailed to you, we had formal responses to all those. We also received positive letters from all of the people who had previous comments, and those have also been included for the record. The other change on this west facade is that it was previously blind in order to respect the privacy of the neighbor. After speaking with them, they would prefer to have seen some windows, so we were able to go ahead and mirror the windows on the west side. So this is the existing historic structure, and now we mirrored those windows on the west side and added those. There was some discussion also of the view shed and how it would maybe look for the neighbors, so we went ahead and prepared renderings that addressed vantage points from the neighbor's property of what the addition will look like. There is a pin oak tree that is also located in the rear portion of that property. We had arborists evaluate the tree. We had consulted with an arborist, and so did the west side yard neighbor. Both arborists said the proposal will not impact the tree in any way. Additionally, we also took a look at drainage across the entire site. We're installing a drywall and taking all of the new hard surface area and putting that into a drywall so that we end up with a net slight reduction in per base coverage. So those are the changes that occurred since the last Zoom meeting.
Well, I think Ryan said that, but I didn't see this. I guess the question for us is the demolition of the existing one-story building which is attached to a historic structure and there are laws regarding that. So how does the board feel about removing the one-story structure and having it on the two-story? Do we need a formal caution or demolition permit process?
Provide us with that addition in terms of this relation to the original house.
I'm sorry, could you?
Provide us of how that addition is came to be on the back of that house. Is it as old as the house?
Certainly. I also provide a little bit of content in my cover letter. So the home was constructed somewhere in the 1900s. What I did is I took a look at all of the available GIS aerial mapping, and unfortunately, it's not clear enough to indicate exactly when that structure on the back of the home is constructed. However, it does look new, and it does not appear to be part of what is the original 1900 structure. When I took a look at what is the current property records, they indicate that the porch, which is the deck that surrounds the existing, the existing structure, so that existing footprint is here, 189 by seven square feet, and the deck surrounds that, and it's built into the deck. So it appears that they had been constructed around the same time. So the property records indicate that that deck was installed in 1990. So when I took a look at the zoning code, Chapter 64, and looked at the definition for non-contributing building, it would appear that this may qualify as a non-contributing part of the original structure. Therefore, it may not need to be a historic demolition permit and rather maybe just a demolition permit. So the, you know, the section defines non-contributing building as it's not consistent with any of the architectural styles in the chapter. It's not present during the period of significance, which is 1700 to 1930, or it's not listed independently on the register. And due to alterations, disturbances, or addition or other changes, it no longer assesses the historic integrity. And I think that this 187 square feet fits into that definition. So I would ask the board to possibly consider, is it necessary to move forward with the Chapter 64 classification?
How does everyone feel about that?
It hasn't actually been detailed. I don't know what it shows on the 1979 historic survey.
It just shows the house.
Doesn't show the rear addition at all?
No.
So it's after that. Enough. I think the overall restoration of the front of the house, which is what can see through the road primarily, is crucial, and the rear addition is not as crucial.
We've allowed, I feel the same way. We've allowed several times in the recent tests, people to do work on the back of the house where it's not seen from the street, and it's more designed to blend in with the look of the house, rather than some addition that we slapped onto the back at some time. How does the rest of the board feel?
I would agree with that. I think there are a couple of components on the front of the house, and I don't know if these have been discussed previously, but just per my count, there's some other historic alterations taking place on the front, which are the removal of the chimney, right? The front chimney is proposed to be removed. And then we have removal of the shutters that are in the house today. So we're going to shutter this. And then there's the change in the arch top windows, so those are going to go to more of a flat top window, and there's some changes for, it seems like egress reasons in the dormer. That would be changed in the apartment as well. And then basically just the steps to the porch and some alterations to allow the stone platters to address. So I'd be more interested to discuss those all and follow the more on what's happening on the rear. It does seem that there's a big case in question for treating that differently.
Do we need a public hearing for the demolition?
It's up to us.
That's up to you. I mean, the only thing that I can share with the board is we've been advised or explained a different way by the planning and zoning attorney, and also to remind the board that not that this is the same case, but on the slavy application, you require the rear portion that was to be demolished to go and receive an historic demolition permit for partial demo. And then how it's been explained by the planning and zoning attorney is that by the action of not necessarily removing the dated addition, but the action to the contributing structure, meaning the house, because the house is from the 1900s, and that essentially you're cutting a hole in the wall to demolish the addition, that that is where potentially the historic demolition aspect plays its part. But that's something for the board to decide.
It's sort of, I mean, I appreciate what the village attorney has said, but we've done stuff. There was a house on South Street next to the church that had a very modern 1900 addition put on it. We thought about it and let them remove that. So we've done stuff, we've done stuff both ways in the past.
Yeah, I think it was determined by whether the rear addition had some historic value or was integrated with the historic house to where it appeared to have some sort of historic value, rather than say on that South Street house, it was clearly a 70s or 80s or 90s addition that had no similarities in the existing house, didn't have any architectural features that would distinguish it, whereas the house on Mulberry did, even though it was a later addition, whoever did it and whenever it was done, as I remember, they did a, they put brackets on it, they integrated it into the existing houses, so we felt like it was part of the whole, whereas I'm not so sure that's the case here.
Do you have any pictures of the addition?
The existing?
Existing.
Yeah. I also submitted these along with our application too, so it is part of your record. Like, you have them right here. Take a look at that. So this is what the current rear addition looks like.
That's not consistent with the existing house.
And it's noted that all of the siding is currently vinyl, so they did, you know, kind of tie it in with vinyl siding, but it's, we're also taking the next step to remove that vinyl siding and place plastic around it.
So my feeling is that if it wasn't in place in 79, there's still actually, even though the National Register has moved on the plaque out or something like that, our historic district acknowledged in the zoning law and the demolition permit is still ruled by the 79 survey.
Which type, 1930 part of?
And this is clearly, I think it's fair to assume that this isn't from 79 or 30, and so therefore it's not a contributing addition to the existing house and probably doesn't need a historic demolition permit.
Now the decision is, do you guys want to hold a public hearing anyway, just so you don't take the option away from the public?
We can hold a public hearing on
November?
The site plan.
Correct.
And include that aspect of it in the site plan.
We can do that.
But not base it on the fact that it's a historic addition that we're doing a historic demo on.
Correct.
I guess the only other thing I just talked about there is we did have a public hearing at the last zoning board of appeals meeting, and no one attended that meeting at all. And as I had mentioned, we had addressed all of the public comments previously formally, and we've also received positive recommendations from all of those people.
Just to remind you, Seth, that was for the variance only. This is final site plan review.
So the comments may be on different subjects, rather than on the variance, it might be on the, you know, the roof of the
The comments were about the site plan.
Stone planters out far, moving of the door, and those sorts of things. And I think we have required public hearings on pool placements because of potential noise impacts and other sorts of things that neighbors may be concerned about.
You said we're going to move it forward?
Yeah. Well, I think that would be a fair condition, is have a public hearing on the site plan, but rule that the demolition of that rear addition is not subject to the historic demolition law.
It feels that way. That's what we could do next time, and we could also address parents' concerns about the front of the building. But that is, how does the board feel about Darren's comments?
I think we should get comments on the site plan now, so if they want to make any changes before the public hearing, they would have that opportunity. You want to start, Darren?
Yeah. Well, I guess with respect to the house, probably the most significant one was the condition placed or the suggestion made by one of the members of the ZDA. They talked about varying roof lines and varying, which is size or shape, just to create a little more light and air for the neighbor. So I suppose that would be the main threshold question, just because that was put into the resolution from the ZDA. Did you prepare to talk about that?
Sure. I mean, I would be prepared to talk about any of these items now. Sure. I can go forward into here, but I'd love to take the time that we have. You know, several things that were done architecturally to indicate where the original structure is and the new additions begins. Just on that west side facade, we've inserted in one foot from the historic structure to indicate that. On the east side facade, replacing trim down that side. And I also note that both on the south side of the facade and the east side of the facade, there is a hip roof that meets the gable. So the gable is extended, this is the original home, the gable is extended all the way to the rear of the yard, and then where possible, the hip roof is added to indicate that. So efforts have been made to, you know, to try to address that as best as possible. I believe the comment that came from the zoning board of appeals was more of a discussion about some sort of a flat roof in indicating that they would like the entire roof on the rear facade to be flat, and that just did not seem to treat, you know, the existing historic structure. And all efforts have been made to accommodate that with the hip roofs, and that was kind of our response and discussion during that.
The ZDA's comment should be addressed to the variance and not the site plan. That's our job.
My general impression on the roof line is that you don't necessarily need a step down or a change in roof from the street, which is what we're generally supposed to make up as our primary concern. You won't see that one way or the other. And certainly I wouldn't go for a flat roof. I think keeping it consistent with existing roof lines makes a lot of sense. I think the side touches in terms of trail and setbacks are more important than stepping down the roof. Just my theory on it.
And the renderings do provide a little bit of a perspective from the streetscape, and as you can see from this upper left rendering, you know, looking at the building, you can, you don't really see the roof in the rear, as you had mentioned. Similarly, along the west side, you know, you don't see that continuation of the gable.
I can see that and understand that, and I didn't realize the comment was directed towards making a flat roof for the roof. So that's helpful to understand. I think more interested, I'd be more interested to talk a little bit about just the decisions on the upper windows, and specifically with respect to the 310 square feet being added in the attic. From reading it, right, there's some habitable area being proposed for the attic, which then seems to suggest that the dormer needs to be egress compliant. And I'd be just most interested to know if we're talking about fire escape or systems or the potential for a fire escape or something of the like to be needed in that location, because that dormer is somewhat visible from the road.
So currently, especially along the west side facade, the dormer does not have any egress.
No windows?
No windows, no egress. So as, and it does have a two, it is a two and a half story listed building. There is 310 square feet of existing space in that attic. So that, in order to, you know, accommodate the building code requirements, the smallest windows possible have been placed in that, in that dormer.
Right. So the case, yeah. But then with the addition of those windows, does it need for any sort of external stair to fully implement the egress requirement, or is such as that being doubled in some other way?
As the engineer in the project, maybe not in the best position to fully answer that question in detail, but certainly look into that. I do believe that the requirement is that the window be, I believe it's 5.2 square feet, and that is what has been accommodated, so that, and that's all that's necessary for a fire escape. That's my understanding of that?
Yeah, make that comment. We had, we live at 19 Chestnut Street, and we had a barn, and we had to make certain accommodations because of egress and such. And they said as long as you have a fire ladder in that story, that is sufficient for exit.
Yeah, and there's certainly lots of different scenarios, and in very specific, there's lots of different things that can be done based on the situation. I think the concern would simply be that, you know, if some sort of external ladder fixed to the building is required, that that would be something that people would want to work more at, just because it's the front quarter of the house and the sidewalk. But if it's an internal ladder that can be rolled out, or it's help your fire sprint coaches, or a second staircase, or some of the other ways, then I don't think there's a site plan concern necessarily or even a historic concern.
Is there a possibility that there are existing windows underneath that vinyl? Because why would you put a dormer on with no window?
If we look at what is the east side, there is a window in that dormer, so it may be possible.
Do you have to test it if this enters something, there's going to sign it in on the inside or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay. So, you know, I would advise you to go take a look, or somebody to go take a look, because if there's existing windows, you might want to keep them rather than putting new windows that, you know, if they need cover.
Yeah, I just found that section from the architect's notes. You know, the two new windows we had in the dorm to allow the emergency egress for level three, for the IRC 310, these windows must have a minimum net clear opening of 5.7 square feet, which is what these windows are.
Correct.
The just question comes up, like, once you're out the window, where do you go from there? So the concern is just that if it's going to be a fire escape, we should take a look at it.
There is a provision in our law that the window panes have to be vertically proportioned. So sometimes the way you deal with that is you put a divider, you know, vertical one in the middle if the proportions are more horizontal than vertical, or you can make them more vertical in the heart of the, you know, they just can't be more horizontal than vertical.
Yeah, we started, you know, many meetings ago, this discussion, and it was that these are the most proportionable possible to meet the requirements, and still the Roman referred to propose to provide structural head without significant modification.
Marvin will actually sell you an applied cetera margin for their authentic placements, so it's definitely something to look into, and I believe they'll even do it as a simulated divided light, and it will still be the full pane in that catch of egress, but the appearance would be that it's split in the middle, that's two separate windows, so you'd have to look at four separate windows up there, just they would operate as two.
You have any questions from the board?
One thing I wanted to talk about is the front of the house. Number one, you know, the moving of the door and the steps, that seems to be a fairly non-historic thing to do. And I understand it might work better from an interior perspective, but is there, you know, any way you can accomplish what you need to accomplish without moving the door from its presumably historic location?
Because the staircase is coming down, and it's a very steep staircase and very narrow, there's no way that you can make the stairs safer to come down without moving the door, because we need a small platforming place.
Is that the way the door and the staircase have always been?
It is.
Treacherous.
Absolutely treacherous. And I don't think they're really at the code, because I think they're only about six inch stairs.
And then secondly, the planters, you know, front porches are really important in the village, and the planters, as proposed, seem a little high to the, in which they actually block the porch. And it seems to me if you brought them down a foot or so, so that they look like planters rather than the foundation of the porch, it wouldn't detract from the porch itself. And I don't think that would be, you see what I mean? It sort of looks like the new stone has taken over the actual structure of the porch.
We'd be happy to take a look at that.
And this is the current situation, so all of the plantings are actually taking of that, you know, bottom portion of the porch as it currently exists. And one of the other things that we took a look at is this existing porch does not have walls, so we'd like to continue to not, that aspect of it. And in order to do that, we needed to meet some building code requirements for safety, and that wall helps us achieve that. I think the requirement is 30 inches. There is some bearing height across this porch, but that is one of the considerations for those.
And is it going to be real stone? Real stone?
It will be blue stone.
I think Johnson guess it actually helps you with the 30 inches, because you'd be sort of dropping the planter level, and then you would lower your fall to break from the edge of the planter.
It just strikes me as a big element in the front, out of proportion with the needs for a planter. That was my general impression. I suppose because of the interior, I can live with moving the door as long as the door is maintaining the historic quality of the door, the door frame and all that?
The entire door is going to be refinished and reused.
Right.
And identical door is to be either created or placed on the bottom side.
Yeah. If it makes it more functional in terms of the stair landing, I can probably go along with that, but I still would like to see the, I don't trust new stone walls because they never look like old stone walls because of the materials or all these little tiny thin slabs. I mean, just, they don't look historic unless you really have a good wall maker. And so therefore to have it so tall and such a strong element in the front, I'm a little suspicious of it.
So just about a foot taller, just so you can see?
Yeah, you know, like, I don't know what the height of that wall is, you know?
I, as I said, I think it varies, as you can even see from this perspective, you know, from one corner to the other corner, there's some change in elevation. I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 36 inches, you know, maybe before you've had its highest.
I think that it all.
Are the columns the way they are now? Remind me?
Yes.
So those are not being changed? And those are what columns?
To the best of my knowledge, those are the columns. Existing and the present.
And then ask the question of the chimney. I don't know if you have a photo back on the screen, but I know you have it in the package. The existing chimney that come off?
I'm starting to doubt that that's anywhere near original, because they almost never put chimneys on the outside of the house.
And it
That was a later addition.
It's not planned to and does not now function as part of the heating and cooling system. system. So you don't know if that need to be, that current basis.
And then the last item was the, the archtop dormer. So we talked about the dormers that get the egress windows, but then, I'm sorry, not the, the gable windows, let's call them the highest windows in the iteration. And they're changing to now more of a square.
Sorry, I can pass it over to you.
Yeah. It's kind of like a round arch in the top.
Yeah, it just kind of fits up into the.
It's like 1860s or 70s to make, did the final signing.
It does look like it's a blocked window, not necessarily part of the original window form.
None of the windows are historic in this house, right? They're all later additions?
Yeah.
And are you, you're replacing them all?
You're replacing all the windows and the historic structure and proposing to match those with the new ones.
Yeah, and none of them have divided lights now?
Yeah.
And you would consider at least two over two windows, which would be more consistent with the historic?
I mean, currently we're proposing this in the blank, the blank replacement.
The historic inventory does have it, it's two over two. The historic inventory form, when that was done, it called it not as two over two.
From a historic perspective, it's a much better, we still were doing that.
Is this proposed upper window on the peak, replacing same size? The photo of the older one looks a little bit smaller and then the window under the peak looks kind of pretty jammed up there, you know, looks a little crowded in the peak for the size of the location it is. The, the existing one, even with the semicircular bucket, has at least some relief from the peak.
Give me sense, what was there previously in the historic condition before the final replacements went in? Is there any evidence in the attic or?
The only photo we have from the historic inventory, I believe, is this kind of black way down the bottom. So it's a little bit difficult to tell, but then the other one that was included is this one. And so it does show, but this is, you know, after that has been. You know, it's possible that, you know, we could consider some reduction in that size and possibly the shape of those, that is possible. I can certainly, you know, work with those and actually.
Yeah, doesn't bother me anything. Indeed, the existing building, building window is not probably historic. I think proportions are fine. And I see, I've seen a lot of, you know, that, that elevation there, the existing elevation, the line that goes right up through the roof line, this has a trim board coming down, which, you know, maybe makes it look a little more crowded than existing, but I think it's a nice feature.
Oh, you mean this joint? You mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, so actually it'll be recessed. From the eye. The facade will be recessed from a little bit of an overhang on the trim board.
Yeah. It's a beautiful photo it looks like. And Paul mentioned.
That's good.
We need a motion to say that we don't feel that we need to have a short demolition permit and that we're scheduled a public hearing for the next meeting, we're going to have a public hearing at the end.
If you want to include that all in a motion, you can, or you can just make a motion, a little public hearing on November 15th meeting. It's up to you, Chair.
The board has asked quite a while, so we're going to hold the vote. The board has, the village board decided to move back to election day, which means we can go back to our regularly scheduled 11:15 meeting. Some people said they couldn't be here on the 20th, so is that, is that better for everybody? So we can, we can schedule a meeting by November, maybe on the 15th.
Well, I can't be here on the 20th, remember?
Right.
So I go back to the 15th, I can do that.
Okay, Mike did the same thing. So that's good. Okay, so we'll, we'll meet on the 15th. So we can, do I have, do I have a motion to schedule a public hearing on 56 Livers Street on 11:15? I'll make that motion. All of your favor?
Before we adjourn, I just, are there any other comments from any other members of the board regarding the site plans that you might be able to attempt to address those?
I have a couple. Just quickly, things that have come up recently, the biggest one is the mini split systems. So I assume that no longer heating the chimney, we're probably going to use some new pump type systems here for heating and cooling, or do you know what the heating and cooling's going to be? So just as a sight plane element, it'd be, be nice to think through where we're putting outdoor units and if possible to keep them behind the fence lines so they're not visible from the road. And then related, something else that seems to come up a lot are the line sets to serve those units, to connect those units to the indoor units. Seems like a fairly major renovation, so I'm sure there's every opportunity to put them in the wall galleries, but just, you know, some sort of affirmative statement to that effect would certainly go a long way, just to say we need to do our best to conceal connections between outdoor and indoor units and do our best to conceal the outdoor units, you know, ideally in the private areas of the yard, so that they're not visible from the road.
Seems to be our greatest challenge is putting mini split systems in front, on the side. Someone put eight mini split systems on our house, one to each room, visible, historically probably visible to the street and someone up the floor and the pipes running right up the side of the building and, you know, it's.
I'm sure that's not the.
How working, you know, the ones we're working with, I said, figure a way. Well, I'm going to have the garage, put it on the side of the garage, you can run the pipes through the garage. Think of your house and don't do this because, you know.
I understand, I understand.
They're running wild right now. And it's better than window units hanging out of windows on historic buildings, but not, it, it's only good if you can hide them, like in the back of the house of the ice shrubbery or whatever.
Certainly, it seems like a very thoughtful renovation and then for those types of things we would consider. Sometimes, you know, force the issue up front, the HVAC, he's constantly picks the lead on that down the road and things get located in funny spots because they weren't there of course early on.
So we'll have the public hearing in two weeks and if there's no major issues, we should be able to address site 15.
Okay.
It's been a long haul, so thank you back for your patience. Second item of the team that's over at Levitt, Levitt, 29 East Street, Parkport, we'll get it to you by the end of the day. This is comeback.
I know.
These guys have had a lot of.
Yeah, I'm trying to see if we can maybe.
That'd be great. So this approved varies with granted, park point of the center building by ZDA. And now we just, any questions looking towards the site plan approval?
No major changes. A lot. Big one is just to drain, to make sure that those, that's captured and goes to the back.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we had also brought up some comments about the posts and trying to.
The posts will conform to the posts on the front.
Right.
You all happy?
There's existing landscaping between the carport and the neighborhood.
Yes, yes. There are three dog rooms and six box streets.
Do we have a motion to approve the park point at 19 East Street? I'll make that motion. I'm sorry, Chair. All of your favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
New business. Lots of pages of signs. I'm going to do these one at a time.
Who said last year? You gotta do the first one on its own, Chair.
My name is Joe Boyer, come with the time assigned representing, I'll give you all the sign up.
A little bit like Paul.
He's my much older brother.
Wait a minute, that's not Paul, but it's almost Paul.
On the better version. Because that's my parents' home.
I'm not getting involved. So the first sign is.
Is it only the same folder, Ryan? Just this folder, nuance and the.
Yep. Get on that. It says it is the street sign on Route 9.
This is the street sign on Route 9. It's a straight replacement in terms of square footage. It's a three inch deep ACU sign, the same as the cash, very similar to what is existing one, including the shape. Only difference is the color change in terms of the color.
I suppose they do that or?
It's, I think they went with the black copy as well, to change it a bit requested. So once we do that, it's all, it's all those codes.
Anybody have any comments? Do you have a motion to approve the first sign?
I'll motion it.
Chair. All of your favor?
Aye.
Second sign. I'll say that.
This is, uh, no, next one. That's the same, that's just a, on one each conversion. This is on the backside of the hospital. It's the main sign on the backside. This is again, replacement, square footage is identical. Replacement panels, landscaping to be fixed, repair as needed. Maybe some deposit similar to what is existing, structure can be changed.
And the lighting is up at the top.
The lighting is, it's a little bit of a.
What's that pad at the bottom, right?
May entrance?
In terms of the cap on the wall?
Yeah, I just wondered.
I'm not sure what that is.
Okay, it's not a liner.
No, definitely not.
So I have a motion to approve the emergency room sign. I'll make that motion. Second, Chair. All of your favor? Aye. And what's the third sign?
Third sign is one of the quarter coat, quilt letters three quarter inch deep, implementation of their new logo and font style to replace the existing Northern Ventures House will help us with painting the same color grounds. I think it's easier to deal with. The font styles are, for sure. I don't think the biggest change is the fact that the logo was left, the lines are supposed to be same.
Okay. Joe is hecking?
All of your favor?
The last one for now. Oh, there's, there's, well, there's two. There's a right like Wellness Center, that's.
I see this four signs, I think.
Is that this one, the emergency room, earth center, the directional sign? I think it's, I think there's four of them, E4, E5, E6, E7. Direction, four directional signs.
Are they all consistent in size with the other ones?
Correct. They're basically, it's an extruded aluminum kit that's painted and then the base is sliding in. Same micrography treatment, pressure sensor vinyl. Content has been updated depending on the directions it changes.
Do we have a motion to approve the four directional signs?
I'll move that.
Second, Chair.
All of your favor?
Aye.
Now, the Frank like Wellness Center sign, 47 West Market Street, is that, is that still the real one?
I was supposed to come, but you guys and my brother.
Okay, I get it, there's sibling rivalries.
Fantastic. Joe Michael planted signs representing around the home center, 47 West Market Street. This sign is in keeping with the other signs in this plaza, same construction. It's aluminum composite, ad raised, two inch by two inch angle on aluminum painted black.
This is on the back of the, the back of the building facing your house?
Yeah, it's four.
It's facing.
Faces all street.
Faces all street.
We're proposing a six square feet.
As far as we know, Chair, that's what the landlord allows for the tent.
Okay. No lighting?
Well, at this time, there's no lighting, but we are aware that the lighting, I think it's in presentation, no percent. If there is a request by the tent, two or four of the lighting, it will match the next one, as well, same percentage.
So it's focused downward on the sign, get away from the street?
Absolutely. But at this time, I said no, no lighting is being proposed.
Any questions on the board? Do you have a motion to approve, right, like Wellness Center sign, 47 West Market Street?
I'll make that motion.
My second, Chair.
All of your favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
My brother was good.
Next is the Jolie Aesthetic and Wellness Center. Second one. Oh, they say people in, right?
Not that kind of ones. My name's Ashley, this is Maggie, we're two of the owners of Jolie Aesthetics and Wellness. We are a first service medical spa owned by us, a trauma surgeon, ambassador, a leader of the clinic and a nurse practitioner. We have a second location going up at East Hill Village in Pepsy will be open in a couple months. We will be above Lord Tuabella. We will be above Lord Tuabella in the loft space where the barber used to be. We're proposing to hang the sign below the Tuabella sign where the barber sign was, it's the same color and the same dimensions.
I wouldn't have brought the sign with me.
I figured it's easier when you're showing.
It's a nice one to tell them.
I designed the logo.
Got fingerprints all over it now.
I know, I'll bring it forward, I'm gonna put it up right after this if you get it approved.
So you're, you go into Tuabella through a separate entrance?
Uh, it's the same issue, so the stairs like in the back that goes up to a loft, used to be a barber pellea.
And that would be eighty inches above the sidewalk if it's hanging below the Tuabella, the barber sign didn't come down?
You guys can make a condition of approval for that and have the code enforcement officer verify once the sign is in place.
Probably seven feet above the sidewalk, it's in the lead, I'm scared. Or we put sometimes the planters under them so that people don't walk under them. Seven to eleven, I think, if you remember?
Yeah, I'm looking, yeah.
Now, what about the, the square footage and the parking, is there any issue with this, Ryan?
So, Service Business Chair, they have the use of the Beadman Arms parking lot, because technically this location is owned by Beadman Arms, they're just tenants there. So they have the use of the parking lot as well as, you know, any other parking in the immediate area.
Is there lighting on the sign?
There's lighting above the sign, above the Tuabella sign, so we're not proposing any lighting.
Oh, so whenever one, you know, light drifts down, it'll hit the, the black sign, well, hopefully the white lights, so. Anybody have any question?
Well, just about the height, I think we, we put a position and it has to be at least seven foot above the sidewalk.
Think we should make a motion with that condition?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Next. The Shoe Shed. This is two for two. Now, it doesn't break the record, it breaks the law. I assume, yeah, we've had some stores that have opened and we don't know what they do, but at least this sign shows you what you're selling.
My name's Jennifer, I'm owner of Shoe Shed. I recently rented the space on eleven West Market Street from Marlene Matway. And she told me when I applied for the lease that I would have to come up before and that I had a block of three square feet of signage pending your approval, obviously. I have this sign made, it is aluminum with a plastic core. And it's double-sided, and it's gonna go right where the gyrotonic sign is. And then this is the cling that I'm gonna put on the window, obviously it's black. And it's, it's just a ladies' underwear boutique and accessories and, you know, I love pegasus too, but, you know, where are you gonna buy a pair of pegasus? And that's important. So, um, yeah. That's it.
Question for the board?
So which, which, which location is it on the site thing, on the...
The middle one.
It's in the middle.
Which gyrotonic, I never understood what you did.
It means what, eleven, eleven, are you west?
Nope, eleven west.
Eleven west?
Yes.
Okay, this one.
That one, in the middle.
Yeah, okay. And that's your three square feet, you're asking?
Yes. And I had the sign made eighteen by eighteen, but I don't think that's full three square feet.
It basically replaces the existing sign, is that...
The gyrotonic, yeah.
Any other questions?
No lighting, right?
No lighting.
Any motion to approve, John?
Second, yes.
All of the favor?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Now. The next one, everybody get the picture that I sent you in nineteen seventy-two?
I thought that was very good.
I just scanned it, someone collected a bunch of, uh, slides that I converted, and at the same time, I converted slides as well as negative. And I blew them up and that was just the meats, and the French pastry next to St. Paul's next. Wouldn't be that, we had a store that...
It's all the wooden doors.
Well, the doors at Brentwood did not work, Brentwood here, the doors at Brentwood don't work, here it's stuck, one goes in, one goes out, you know, terrible doors.
Half my work is done.
Good. That's who that's why you were here.
I like the parking.
Frank, Frank Postard, you know, first day of parking meter nineteen fifty-five, I think it was, he took pictures of the whole village with, I don't know why he needed like twenty pictures of parking meters, but he needed to do that, he needed to do everything.
I wonder when they came out?
I think it was like nineteen fifty-three to fifty-five. He also had first, first day of two-hour parking, which came before the parking meter, they had lots of people hanging the signs, he was everywhere. It was a fun talk.
So they only lasted a few years of parking meter?
Like ten, I think in the seventies or the sixties, I think somebody took them away.
And... Before our time.
Yes. But it was a nice butcher with the big calf.
Oh, it was a butcher, yeah, yeah.
Calf hanging up.
You should have. But I'm here because we're doing a nice renovation on the space, on the inside. And we realized that the storefront is problematic, it's always gonna be problematic, so we'd like to replace the storefront with a better, for the storefront, including having one door and better flow of traffic though inside. We also are going to update our signage. So this here shows you both those stories. The frame is gonna be a aluminum frame, black, that's, that's our, our, our new sign. It looks like we already did it, but that's the sign on our voice location, so it's in the same application. Steel.
See, this is in nineteen seventy-two.
Oh my God, I've never seen that before. Did you bring that for me?
Yeah.
That's so nice.
I sent it to the board.
Why did we send it?
Nineteen seventy-two, fifty years ago.
Wow.
Was that building built yet?
It was there before that, it's been there for a while.
It's been there for a while, yeah.
That's a new apartment.
Yeah, it looks like.
The three little pigs in, in the, the fire of, what was it, eighteen sixty-seven burned down the south side of it, because it was wooden houses. And then they're all brick there, like the north side was, was brick, and so like the three little pigs, it did not burn.
Well, that's the same storefront, that's the, perhaps we need, possibly the loft part to secure a storefront. It's really funny. So, but we wanna replace that.
Good.
And so we decided to have one more, which is better for traffic flow, and it also allows us to have more comfortable seating inside, when you first, when you go in on the right, with more seating.
It took those away from COVID, I...
What's that?
It took the chairs away from COVID.
Yeah.
The, the breakfast gang always sat, held court there for hours every morning. And they were sitting outside in front of the Indian restaurant.
Yes.
Last two years having breakfast, I don't know where they are now.
They're just a bird. They're still around, that's true.
They are, but they're in different places.
They've dropped a lot. Does, does the hanging sign stay?
No, the hanging sign gets removed and catched, and they go to the right.
Basically the only sign in Champa.
Correct.
I was not clear, is this all glass?
Yeah.
What we're seeing there? Okay.
Well, there's, there's oak slats in front of them.
But yes, but then you will have oak slats in the front to cut down the light, we have to have shades because the light is, is brutal on our, everything. So rather than have movable shades for here, we'll have these, because then when you're sitting at the table, it's right on the inside, it's not gonna be so hot. And that, that'll help us also with the, with the heating.
So, explain this, I, I haven't figured out what this is, this is exterior movers?
Yes.
So you'll have glass inside?
No, no, but they're fixed.
Yeah, so they're fixed.
Yes. And currently they're wood, the, so the storefront goes in with it, and there's wood up in here, so that's the way it is, we're replacing that wood and adding.
But they're on the exterior of the glass?
Yeah, it's a little out.
So this, this rectangle in the top is one single glass pane?
Yes.
And this is a single glass pane?
Yes.
You got a small one here, and this is the window, well, the window's higher than this, right?
No, this is, this is south.
This is the window where you have a little bar where you get your coffee cream, et cetera?
Yes, I can show you.
That's right.
And you can refer to that.
The diviner's system, yes.
I thought it, I was spot.
No, it goes almost to the ground.
Yeah, that one there.
Now you can see people's lives. And this is the upper single pane, the big pane here, and then the wood slats will be over the upper pane and the big pane here.
I've always found that wood, is there the unfinished wood, or?
Uh, maybe white oak is probably gonna have some protective coating on it, yeah.
Yeah, I never find that those protective coatings last, they always weather, especially on the south side.
Sun will burn that off in a couple years.
And so unless you wanna have to redo that every couple years, you might think of another solution, I'm not sure that that one will hold up and look good, yeah. I've seen a lot of exterior wood with varnish and all sorts of things, all the marine varnish, and it never holds up, the, the weather outside is just too tough, on the south side in particular. For natural wood that finishes to hold up, unless there's some new miracle thing out there that I haven't seen. So I, I'm concerned about that, I mean, I like wood, I'm, I'm white oak, and if, if it, you know, if you can figure out a way to keep it looking like white oak instead of a sort of half gray and half healing.
There's maybe veneer metals out there, but then it has to be a little bit specialized. Yeah. The, and it looks in this side dimension here, it looks as though these movers go pretty much top to bottom, are you concerned at all about debris and garbage collecting in this, behind the movers or in the movers at the sidewalk level?
Uh, not too much, not too much. Uh, but, you know, it's, it's gonna be some build, so. Now, you could back to my, uh, will be moving out for ceiling up, and the bottom two are fixed, I mean, are, they're, you know, flat.
But it does, it does swing open, right?
No.
Oh, it does?
No, it's good.
I could say little children, middle schoolers, and sometimes teenagers will like, walking by, oh, I can get rid of my garbage here.
Yeah, that's a good consideration, so maybe we make it, you know, the piano, hands on it, to be able to swing it out and clean it, but then lock it in place for visual.
Just giving some pins or something?
Yeah, pins, yeah.
Yeah.
You're trying to swing it out, and then you spray it, and you poliurethane it, a couple years.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And it would also help to clean the outside of the window, if you could swing that out.
You know, I think the simpler solution would be put a, a wood line behind the glass, so maybe you could adjust it, if it's a gray day, you have more light, it's the winter.
Yeah, if you can achieve this look and have it on the inside, that will cut that out, cut that. Yeah.
And you wouldn't have a problem with that, if you can raise it, in the winter, you can raise it up and have more light in the store, and in summer, when it's blind, you can lower it.
Yeah, and you might even, depending on what you get, the, the angle of the slats may be adjustable.
I don't know, it just seems like a better solution to me. These are fixed objects, seems to be more trouble than, than a simple solution, put wood blinds behind it.
I, I, I think I'd defer on that, I do like the aesthetic of it outside, I see what you're going for. Because I, I think what it does is it, it sort of tightens up the entry, and instead of being behind the windows, it, it sort of becomes part of the building to me. And, you know, I, I agree with the maintenance concerns, but I feel like if it moved and if it even moved and just simply refinished, taken away for an afternoon, a day or two at a time. Or maybe there's even a summer and winter version or something with different angles to the slats. I'm, I'm understanding the concept, certainly appreciating the maintenance concerns, but I, that you worry something might be lost if it was inside the building.
Yeah, it's one of the things, yeah, one of the things we did, we walked around and looked at as part of the design discussion, looked at the architecture of Bragg, and that's one of the things we wanted, is this, you know, the, the way that the wood sightings looks. So that's, you'll see this repeated inside of the, the design as well. And I did indicate that on, on...
Yeah, I called it.
I don't know, I'm gonna have to make a decision, you know, it's, it's, either way seems to be reasonable, if you can take it out or hinge it out and repair it and put it back, or if you want this stuff on the inside, it gives you more flexibility to raise and lower the blinds. The dark days, sunny days. This would be permanent effect, and you have no flexibility to cry a day or something. A winter day, you want the sun to come in to warm people sitting there.
Yeah, it, it really is, is so warm now, right now. That's, that's not as much our concern as, as getting shit. And we, because the other one doesn't, the door is the, the window over it.
We have all of that idiot activity, right?
Yeah, yeah.
If you stop the whole outside from coming in, you know. Well, we have to make a decision, we can, a little bit.
Well, if that's what they want to do, I think it's gonna be a maintenance issue, and if you're willing to deal with that, then, you're in town, do I get there?
Yeah, yeah.
But it is a hinge there, you can see it, so for cleaning glass and cleaning debris, that's not gonna be a problem.
And it would have to have, with the width here, there'd have to be some nading width on this side and a latch on there.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, I mean, I, I do like the suggestion of just exploring smaller materials that would have the same aesthetic, just, there might be something out there, if you haven't gotten that far with it yet. There's just a whole host of storefront materials and commercial building products that, that might just be a little bit more durable and have the same look, but.
So Chair, you wanna make that a condition?
How would we?
You would, you can make that a condition of the motion, but you would wanna make sure that whatever alternative is presented, that it complies with the standards of the store districtal over line.
Wanna make that motion, Ryan?
I wish I could, sir.
Either that or like, with, with something similar, which would be, you know, some sort of maintenance program presented, or just some thought being given to regular maintenance of it, if it's going to be made out of white oak. And from what I can tell, Brentwood has been a good tenant and, you know, listened to maintain the building, so I'm not necessarily concerned about it, but I do appreciate that for doing a potentially tough situation in terms of, in terms of collecting traction, something that faces south that might really be subject to some extreme weathering. So I think I should satisfy knowing that there was something that just said there's gonna be thought to how it be maintained and/or... there's gonna be thought to how it be maintained, and/or using more durable materials or exploring materials that might allow for more durable.
Because as you guys know, whatever you vote on, whatever's in the text and the language is only what Justin can enforce. Can't enforce side comments or anything that was made in the minutes. He can only enforce what's in his vote.
Yeah, we, I mean, yeah, we, we have a, we have millions of thousands of buildings that we make right with, and we maintain it with our general, um, partners, such that, that those guys send their customers to us to show their customers how to maintain their opponent. So maintenance, you know, it's a point of pride, but it's also important to run a, run a successful business, so. Uh, I, I, I can show you, but, you know, I also understand, does, does that have a full standard?
I like a maintenance condition. It doesn't hurt. Somebody won't be insured all the time.
Thirty years ago, my house, it broke my head when they'll take it out, and the tech put in, and a guy built me a custom two-inch thick mahogany door, standard polyurethane, and this is good, this is good for a hundred years. Two years later, the polyurethane was bubbling, it was turning black every two years, every other spring, had to get out there and scrape it down, sand it down, and re-stain it in polyurethane, even mahogany, but the, the sun is very powerful.
Yeah, yeah. Well, then, there's wood, there is wood there now, you can send that bird.
That was seventy-two.
I know, it's not that, but someone put it there.
I don't know what happened to the cow. That was hanging there.
Better wood than that, no?
Right.
So we can move to approve this, and if they decide not to put it up and go for some other solution, if it's fixed, then they would have to come back, and if it's not fixed, if it's something on the inside, you would have to come back. So you can think about it.
Okay, yeah, because look at that, we designed it, so.
Okay, the motion to approve the condition that it's maintained properly?
Is the motion also the approval of the selling? Or any separate attention board?
The signers as well, if anybody has any problems with selling.
I like this one, I like this one, yeah. So we're approving both.
We have a second?
Second, yeah.
What was your favorite?
Thank you.
Pretty ancient grain bread for Ryback. I don't have to be calling a case if you're gonna love it.
Uh, you have no idea how good that makes me, and I am gonna wanna go back to bakery right now, tell them that, uh, this is all contingent on getting me in Ukraine.
It's the best bread you've ever had.
That's awesome, thank you. And I, I'm this for you, shall I, shall I?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. The next item is sixty-four sixty month plumber's credit, site plan for another pool.
Yes.
My name's Dave Fustacchio, we own the property, it's close to the home base, my primary residence. We're looking to install an underground pool and a pavilion building in the rear of the property. We've done a fair amount of work on making sure that it's with, um, lot of coverage requirements.
Where is it?
Sixty-four sixty is right next to the Haven Spa.
Ah.
Right on, right to the right, if you're based on Haven Spa, it's the house to the right.
That was, that was bought a couple of years ago, and renovated, and we did the porch, and did the roof job.
We did the roof job, we did the maiden job. Uh, we bought it in December last year. So we'd like to put a swimming pool in. This is really to start the process, to get feedback and comments and anything that we might need to consider. The, the idea is to, is to, the pool would have integrated hot tub, integrated, um, water, and a slide. Uh, the pavilion would be a building that would be matched to the columns and the trim of the main house, so that that would be consistent. We intend to put a fence around the property. It's fenced today, but it's not fenced across the property to hide, um, anything from the street, and so that would be, you know, that's a proposal, to fence the entire property as well as the required fencing for the pool itself.
Fence would start at, at the front plan of the house, and move back there?
We'd start behind the porch of the house, um, which, you can see the side porch, this is the front of the house, the side porch comes around. We would start the fence here and go back, um, which would also serve to, to hide the, um, the mission of compressing units that are sitting on the side of the house.
Is it, is it ready for the submission?
This is part of the full set.
Full set?
Which one?
The second one from the top?
This one, full broken, full set.
Thank you.
Clicked on.
Sorry.
Try that again. Trying to do this, could do Google's right now.
Yeah.
You, you have business on the other side as well, isn't it?
There's a, the, at sixty-four, um, fifty-four, I think it was here. Uh, there's a, also a spa in front of that house, because that's a, that's a.
It's not an area's house. Probably needed this, and then it got changed to another.
Right. She's, Donna's just renting the, the front, which used to be Doc's office.
The pool is up against the Haven Spa, sort of.
Pool is, right, Haven Spa would be, um, on Flat Avenue. And it would be, so pool would be at the rear of the property.
The site plan should, first of all, show the fence, any new fencing, and show in detail what the fence is gonna look like, the height, you know, whether it's boarding back or whatever the style is. And it should have the setbacks, and what the distances are between the pool elements and the property line, because it looks awful close to that back of order.
You know, you're, you're, they are, the setbacks are, are on, um, the set of prints that was previously abandoned, because it is not.
Does that have ten feet from the water crossing line?
Ten feet from the back, sixteen and a half feet from the side.
Okay, we, we need to see that ten feet.
Yeah, and the only, I, I will say that the steps are, um, the steps are, steps to get up to the slide are probably not ten feet, but we're gonna modify it, and we're not looking for a variance, they will be ten feet.
And the garage is pretty good, right?
The stairwell is just, be allowed in the setback, no?
No.
Steps aren't?
Yeah, I think that's sort of a pool feature rather than, you know, front steps to a house or something, which kind of, coach on the front yard.
Because that steps, if they're part of the house, are permitted, but not as part of a, a pool structure or a mini.
Right, I don't know.
I, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
We'd also like to see what point you've come for this. Zoom out a little more, because we see you're between sort of two businesses, and the pool's up against Haven Spa. What's behind you, how far are houses away from the pool? What kind of screen do they have? Because we, we wanna have public hearings on pools, because pools too can be noisy.
Yes.
So we're gonna zoom out a little bit and see the houses in chase.
So either show it, aerial photo, you can get a good aerial photograph to show the neighbors, or put them on your site plan. You know, off the aerials, you can tell where the houses are.
It's sort of half rendering, half site plan, shows a lot of this stuff more.
I'll admit that, I had a phone call from your neighbor in the rear. I know her, from way back, and she was very concerned about this, and I told her to write a letter to the board for tonight's meeting, and if we have a public hearing, she should come. And I don't think she sent anything, did she?
She didn't send anything, I'd have to have the same conversation with your board job.
Yeah, she's very concerned about how close it is to her backyard, and especially the fact that you have an elevated feature back there in which you have a platform that's gonna be higher than the fence. So that she's gonna, you know, she's gonna see people hovering over her backyard. So I think we should at least think about that, and I'll let her express her concerns when, and if she shows. But I think, I thought I shouldn't say that I got that, and it does seem like that that corner, you have a lot of stuff back there. You know, not only the, the water slide steps and, and, uh, but, uh, there seemed to be stuff behind that as well, which I couldn't know exactly what it was.
The pool equipment is behind the water.
Right, so again, pool equipment makes noise. You know, you're putting it right in the, you know, the, the closest neighbor you have in that area.
And we can't see here how close that is.
Yeah, I walked by it today, and it looked pretty, it's.
You know, her house is fairly close to that, that.
That corner, it's sort of the back of her house, or somewhat close to it, and she doesn't have a wide yard, so it's, you know, her back corner of her house is probably fifteen feet from that corner of your property. So I, that's it, uh, we, we haven't approved enough pools of late. That we're not against pools, but we are concerned about how they might affect neighbors. And since you're sort of limited into a six-foot fence in the backyard by code, you know, having that elevated feature that's already five and something off the ground, seems to me it might be, uh.
Well, fence is proposed as a, as an aluminum fence, too, right?
It's not.
The back, the back fence that, that wraps the property would be.
That would stay the property, yeah.
The, the aluminum fence would be wrapped in just from the garage, from the carriage house to the main house. You can see a section of it there, top right.
How many is this, uh, how many is this structure here?
It is twenty by twenty.
That's a really large, how many, do you think, or, 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 how many might be an issue?
I don't think so, I think it's such, it's such a big lot.
It's only seventeen percent, probably, with, with everything included in that. Seventeen percent including the pavilion.
It's a big lot.
So.
And there's a lot of grain out in front of that house.
And, you know, the, the plan includes planting a fair amount of landscape soft materials to not only cut down on noise, but also cut down visibility, so that it's not invisible to the neighbors. But that, it takes some time for this to further, obviously.
I'm not worried about the Haven Spa, I'm, I'm worried about residences behind you, which is what we need to throw the blow up. And we have to have a public hearing, give public comment, and see what can be done, and maybe some mitigation may be needed for, uh.
There's also some redon, you sheds, if you're at a north on redon, you have the ability to see between the garage and the house, some, some of the areas talking about, usually, yes, to how you work, how to see.
I walked by it today, and I, I couldn't see it back there, because it was a beautiful carriage house, and, uh, I don't think you're gonna see much of it from the street.
The idea is elevated.
Pretty big house, but if these things are elevated, the roof, the thing, the, whatever's there, some of that stuff might have to be discussed, because, you know, we have to, you know, we have. Whenever somebody's building something above the height of a fence, like a second story, we don't want windows facing, but people could look down on someone on the next property and so on, so we try to preserve, you know, the property. And then, of course, pool things, or kids screaming going down a slide, you know, it's.
Is this seventeen hundred and fifty square feet of wet lay, limestone patio included? Does it, does that count as lot coverage? No, why is that? Because it's.
Landscape element, it's not a covered structure. If you go to definition of a structure, a pool, a swimming pool is considered a structure, but not patio, it's considered a landscape element.
I asked the same question with the Justin Horn, is it not patio?
Yeah.
If grass or stone or gravel is just, you know, covering.
Yeah, well, gravel would be probably able to, this is a lot of area.
Let's know it's stone if it's not concrete.
It, it brings up the drainage question, and not without, right? So there's a lot of water that wouldn't wanna be directed towards the pool that's going to be directed, you know, away from it, including toward your septic and your house. So, some conversation around how, how drainage would be dealt with.
And where is the septic on this plan?
There's two.
Side walls are septic.
They're not on, uh.
They're on survey.
The sewers are on the other side of the street, the sewers are.
Yeah, this is the septic, just that's the septic showing. They're surveying it. Also, the house, thirty-nine and a half feet from the front edge of the pool.
The septic, have what health requirements for it to be, you know?
Thirty-five feet is the, is the water house setback for septic, for swimming.
The sewer line right behind that is across the street, not on your side of the street.
And I had, I had the dry walls dug up to make sure that I have it properly located, put on the survey, and then measured the edge of the pool.
To be fair, there's, there's a lot of detail throughout these pages. I think what's difficult about it is you really have to hunt back to find certain answers. So to whatever extent you can consolidate it onto a site plan, so we can, you know, clearly see that the, the important measurements marked, property line setbacks, um, the location and types of fences around the property, the septic, all of this is throughout these pages. What I didn't really see drawn as a site plan, but most strictly as an elevation, were some of the landscape elements, which are obviously gonna be pretty heavily relied on for buffering. So I'd be just curious to see that laid out in a plan form, so that we know when we're reviewing this, how against that buffering is from the neighboring parcels, and you can get a sense from.
Especially some landscape, like some of the greens between the fence and the pool, in the back, and the pool filters, which grow up and provide more, more screening and maybe some sound for the.
Especially with the pool equipment being.
Everything's built to provide its sound.
No, exactly. But at least you do.
But I do provide some sort of visual, if the fence is six feet, maybe higher than that, that's helpful.
There's a water, uh, structure here. So, which you've got a little bit of a pool with like a waterfall going into the pool underneath.
Underneath is just a sitting area, and waterfall would come off the top underneath, um, the roof, and fall straight down. Uh, where you see the brown decking up top.
Yeah.
It's actually, it'd be a waterfall, uh, from there, and a waterfall from the other side.
Okay. So how do we treat these structures? This is a pretty large, high structure. This is just, it's a pool?
No, it's part of the pool, so that would have to be added to the square footage of the actual pool.
And it's a. We're not concerned about height? I mean, like, this is gonna be looking, you're gonna be standing up there, it'd be like you're standing on top of the fence with the neighbors.
Yeah, that's I think a concern. I mean, what he's doing is allowed, there's no reason why you can't.
Put a.
I don't think there's any reason you can't put a water slide in, but I think you have to put it in a place where it doesn't have an impact on residential backyard.
Yeah.
But.
So if you're visiting the pool, that's height, so the structure, what you have is the pool.
Well, we've never seen anything like this.
No, definitely.
We've seen lots of pools, but no, and pavilions, that's relatively common, but, um, water slides is a new, new thing for us, and we would like about.
Okay, we'll, we'll go back and take a look at that.
One of the things that helps us, and could help you, is if you visit your neighbor ahead of time and have a discussion with them, a lot of times, you guys can work it out amongst yourselves, and then you don't have to try to, you know, be the compromises of the view. We have a public hearing.
I spoke with you, so I'll, I'll go back.
Okay.
If, if all the neighbors come to public hearing, I think this will move my mind.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's far better if you bring the plan, show them, talk to them, maybe they'll give you some idea, you know, it would really help us if you would swing this onto this side, or could you put the pool filter in the front of the pool, or kind of the back of the pool, you further away from us, uh, and so on, so talking to the neighbors would help. away from us, and so on, so talking to the neighbors would help. And then the public hearing would be much smoother. There's our comments about concern, because again, your neighbor could sell their house, a new person moves in, the people might say, I'm not buying that house with the pool, it's what the kids make a noise on water slide all the time, it's a property, so we have to protect the future, there'll be other buyers and other people living there, so, you know. But, you know, submit, submit a, a, a site plan to write in if you're ready, if you need more time.
I will, I would probably need more time to go back and address all of these concerns.
I mean, every month, you know.
That's a bit.
Just really quickly, and we've seen some other applicants who did for pools, it's just some narrative or some thought or some annotation in the site plan in terms of, of how you're gonna manage this volume of material that's gonna be coming out of the ground as you move around the site. You do have some constraints, obviously, with your septic system that you're not gonna wanna be on top of, and then navigating around building the pool and corrotto and different things. So just some discussion about how that's gonna be managed. And I would think, including the way trucks would approach your dining, if there's any need for mud control or dust control or anything like that, just so we, you know, go into this with our eyes wide open because it is on...
You got a question, Brian?
Yeah. You guys should, if, if the applicant feels he cannot make the November fifteenth date, you guys should schedule a public hearing tonight. So if he can't make November fifteenth, are you comfortable with December sixth?
I will have to see. I obviously don't do these chores myself.
Sure. If you leave it open-ended now, you would have to come back in order for that public hearing to be scheduled now.
Well, I think I probably want to come back anyway just to make sure that they're comfortable with it.
I would be cool with meeting that.
But he would have to...
We've done that before.
I'm just trying to respect that he isn't through a, you know, a revolving door of meetings and wondering why.
But he could adjourn, no? If, if he wasn't ready, could postpone it?
I mean, we, we just need that ten, ten days to notify the neighbors.
But he can notify you that he's gonna be ready on December sixth, or January sixth, or whatever the next date is that he feels comfortable with. And the meeting before that, he can set the public hearing, he doesn't have to be here for that.
Okay, if you wanna go that direction, that's, that's okay.
Just let, let us know in advance so you can, you put on the agenda to have your public hearing set.
And then, so December sixth will be the meeting, but this is the third week of December's Christmas week, or so whatever.
You already canceled that meeting.
I canceled that meeting, so we'll be meeting the first of January, whatever day that is. So there's only one meeting in December.
January third would be the next one.
Okay?
I will see how fast I can consider. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you so much. Good luck, thanks for coming in. We have another discussion. Jesse Laurie and her friend ship sixteen eighteen South Street. You're back. And we're still talking about split systems with everybody that comes in. Are we talking about split systems in this house? I said, we talked about split systems and hiding them.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm only gonna have one maybe split, so that will be one condenser for that, and then the other one will be a condenser for the access.
And that's on the side of the building?
On the side.
That's the side to the left.
So the condenser goes across the front view and then down the sideline. So it'll be around eleven feet across by twenty-three long maximum on the side yard.
Yeah, on the left side. Around, around one or five.
Yeah, there's a...
Page seven.
You missed it. Oh, there it is. But if you're going there with it, and then, then the fence across there, and then the pipe would be inside the building, I guess, probably to a place. So why you just came for a discussion, you're not ready yet?
No, she's on for formal application.
Sure.
Oh, this is his request, okay. Because he was on for a discussion, I thought you should show those at the end.
Yeah.
Okay. So at the pre-meeting, we talked about, Michael and I met with Ryan last week, talked about the six-over-six window concept. And you had said you would do the six-over-six windows in the front, but you, you didn't want to do them in the sides or back.
Right, we, we discussed that last time, and you had asked, right, actually required that I would do the six-over-six colonialons in the front, and that on the sides and the rear I could do, like, a quick outline. So it's the top four across both properties, and then lower two windows on each side of the door, that will all be six-over-six colonial rail. And then we've got two side windows, one on each side. That's also, that's on page three.
So there's six-over-six now?
Correct, so it will also, it'll stay, you know, double, double hung, it just won't have any grills on it. And you don't see those from the street at all.
No, you do. It's more by on the full side, you can see. Now that those trees have been cut down, you're gonna see even more.
Those are the big trees that came back.
They're gone.
I saw them on the truck. That was, those were, yeah, trucks. Yeah, it seems to me if, if there's six-over-six left, especially something you can see from the public street, they should, you know, on the previous one, they were, the windows were gone, we can't acquire them to do something, or it's harder to do something, replace a, a new window with a...
It's about quite high, and once you put a window dressing up there, I don't think it's really all that noticeable, one way or the other.
But our job is to keep historic buildings looking historic. So if you can see it from the public street, I think we've generated, and it's already a six-over-six historic window, we're willing to go the step of replacing with a modern window for insulation and that sort of thing, as long as it has exterior dividers, and that's what was there originally, so that nobody from the street knows that it's a new window or an old window. But if it's six-over-six now, I think it should stay that way, and it's visible from the public street.
How many windows are on the left and right side of the house?
One on each side. So that upper window that you see in the lower photograph on page three, there's one on each side of the house. Up over the garage on the right side, and up over the bedroom on the left side.
That window, yeah. So it doesn't seem my reason why they'd ask me to do this, it's a six-on, two more windows that are visible from the street, and the back, the ones that face the kill, the one that would be playing the nose.
That wasn't part of the prior discussion, but I definitely agree, the side windows, I think, are important in this case. The side windows, I, I do feel are important in this case, especially because they are currently six-over-six, and they are visible from the road.
And they're part of the story.
Yeah, initially, is that, no, so...
Might qualify as a solid, my argument.
I was just following my, I talked about last time.
Well, maybe you have to remember that we do.
What is, but we're also, there's, these are aluminum-clad windows. Do we, have we taken a position on aluminum-clad versus wood previously, just because...
Yeah, I'm not putting in a cheesy vinyl window.
Oh, they're very nice windows. I'm not saying that at all, I'm just more for my clarification.
No, but the aluminum clad, whether the marbles, you know, are fine, hopefully, I know a real, but not fine other plastic or whatever.
So the requirement is simulated divided lights, but we don't differentiate between aluminum cladding versus wood exteriors.
I mean, they're both from, you know, unless you go up and scrape with your thumb, you wouldn't know one way or the other.
There's a, there's a, I find there'd be a slight difference in terms of the profile, so you see much more of an OG, a much slimmer profile with the marble ultimates, when the wood versus the aluminum cladding. I agree from a distance, it's fairly hard to tell, I just more for a point of clarification because I saw that specifically called out, that's application.
Right, we've been, we've been okay with exterior divided lights, buttons, and the material, as long as it's not, you know, clip-ons or cheap plastics or things. We've been okay with that because from the street, it's really impossible to tell.
And from a maintenance perspective, obviously, they're gonna, they're sort of whole group in that regard.
Yeah.
Is this, is this more of an ultimate line?
Has the exterior buttons simulated divided lights, so it's interior exterior and from the left.
I've just got a lot of projects going, and I'm really trying to get them all done within a budget. You know, my goal is, of course, to just continue to restore the home to its natural, we follow the historic guidelines, but, you know, you wouldn't think that those grills add a price to the windows, but it really, it changes the cost of them pretty significantly.
Yeah.
But our perspective is that, you know, the code says that we're trying to protect that historic appearance of these houses in the historic history, that's sort of what we've been charged to do, and...
Changes the price of the neighborhood.
So, you know, that, that would be my preference, and my vote would be to maintain, if it is, if it's six-over-six now and can be seen from the road, I'd like to say six-over-six. So we're not diminishing the character of the house from the public street. And it's different for like the additions, those are obviously not historic, the wings, so we can be more flexible on those, but the historic core of the house, I think we should try to maintain the historic windows already appearing something.
Yeah, I agree, I appreciate the budget considerations and the fact that you're making investment in the property and trying to do things right. But I, I do feel that they're very visible facades. I think it would be a, a loss to have them coming up and down the sidewalk.
And they're gonna actually be more visible because you have storm windows on now, right?
Yeah.
So...
That's a nice, that's a nice pickup too, and probably the warm window AC unit, so that's a nice.
Yeah, so then those buttons are gonna stay up for, so now, or then, when they're replaced, then now, so I think it's important.
And this is also one of several of this home in a row, right? There's, there's several homes of the same style, crucifix form, right on South Street, all in a row, and, and they started to come in for various reasons, so I think there's also just a nod to keeping some consistency between, he's done with visible elevations too, because it might come back in, if you depress it, this, this closes next door.
So what's being composed of these windows?
I want to take them out. I've gone back and forth, and first of all, I just, I'm not even sure how that, that approves, to be pretty, I wasn't up here when that happened. The one on the right's in a, in a bathroom, and it's in a really ridiculous place, kind of partially over the toilet. And the one on the left is in a closet. They don't really work well. The symmetry does not work with that entire space. The style certainly doesn't work, the scale doesn't work. Everything about them is just not good, and because of where they are, to be able to bring them into where they would look, you know, symmetrical and look like they belong on that side of the house, I can't do it. Adaptive degree, I'd have to do the entire bathroom all over, and, and it's just, it's a small bathroom, there's just not really room for a window.
So you're intending just to have a blank wall?
Yeah, I'm gonna take them out, I'd like to really take them out, obviously replace the side end to get it exactly matching what we have now, and then obviously move that hose, and then rework the landscaping, and, you know, try to get something that comes up a little bit higher, something that will cover part of that structure, because it, just alone on it, you know, it just looks bad, so...
Can't really see.
I really, really, it will look way better if it's just landscape there, and those windows are out, they're just, I think they look really bad, I think they chew them a little bit of the house. And if I'm trying to bring it back to what it was, I think the only way to really do that is to take them out.
So I think we got, I think we, no one has a real problem with anything except those two windows.
The two upper side windows.
The two upper side windows, the rest of us are comfortable with everything else that you want to do.
Yeah, I'm not perfectly happy with a blank wall facing the street. So if you say you're gonna put in some tall landscaping, so that it's gonna sort of screen that facade?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's about symmetry, and then bringing the landscaping up higher will do that. You know, is it blank, parallel, it just looks back, right? So hose will be moved probably somewhere else to the side. Yeah, and then...
What's on the other side of that middle part of the wall that's solid on the inside?
It's just part of a bedroom, and it's actually, I don't know, it's not a flat wall, it's got this sort of little jig in it, like, to where you can even, and then, yeah, not ideal for a winter day, I might, I'm not sure how this got built the first time, especially since you're being pretty strict about, you know, staying with the colonial windows and the front, so those just...
This provision of the law hasn't been in place for that long, it probably was done before historic preservation law went into effect. Because that's been since...
Two thousand nine.
What?
Two thousand ten.
Two thousand nine. So before that, we had no control over the safety.
No, it's good, I mean, I appreciate that, you know, you wanna keep the neighborhood looking at site, and so do I, so I think the best way to go about that is to remove them. They don't add anything to the house, they don't add anything to the neighborhood, I think actually they're kind of a distraction, they look like they belong on like a cabin, not at home on South Street.
Yeah, there's no way of...
The only thing might be some variation, the siding on the rotor, color, siding, texture or something to just break up this long facade, which looks like it's an extension of the original center portion of the house, in addition to the landscaping we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, the homes also work, we do paint in the spring after we redo the windows. They had paint on the weather, maybe you can do it earlier, but, and that all is the exact same window, just on the other side of the house on sixteen, and that, that space right there is a pantry. So again, it's not serving any purpose other than just being a place for cobwebs to grow. We don't use them, none of them, they just don't open while they're closed, while they're letting eat the steak like crazy, and...
So if you're willing to agree to the left inside those two windows having six-over-six in them, I don't think we have any other problems, but we could, we'd waste a motion to approve this if everyone was agreeable.
Okay, and so along the path, I can leave them without grills? The only thing that you're asking that I have to do is to put grills on the upper two windows on each side. I'm asking you why, I went back and forth, I'm gonna say, you know, our last discussion made it seem like it was a bit optional. So that's why I said no to it. It was also just running the numbers, and, you know, every time you put a real long window, because you're some of the kind of girls that snap on.
Right.
You're not the kind of girls that will just side the window. Yeah, sure, you have to honor the window, and they're just so expensive, so I'm just trying to...
So do I have a motion to approve the site plan for sixteen eighteen South Street? With the condition that those two upper side windows are six-over-six exterior buttons? I'll make that motion.
One second up there.
A little bit paper?
I'd like that.
You're all set? We're all set, go move your house.
The things, just have those two in, all right? You're gonna like it, it's gonna be beautiful, I promise.
It's gonna be a little pink.
Yeah, I want to get that. Plenty of contractors is really perfect.
I'd like, I'd really like that. I'm from Woodman, thirty-nine Flat Avenue. We do have these little, it's behind the flags. Oh, just put it right there, nobody can check, because otherwise they'll block the camera. You might have blocked the camera, but right in front of the focal.
Crank it around a little bit more.
Jeff could blow it up, we could get it pretty on the TV button.
Well, we have two new pages that aren't in the packet.
Okay.
So we just need it for the brief introduction. So Patrick Whitman, his sister's in heaven, who's working with me on this house, which I own. And it's thirty nine Platt, this is Platt, this is Mulberry, and it's across from the empty lot, that's part of that paragraph.
This house, just a rich house on the corner or a back, yeah?
So.
It's a very small house, but a very small lot. I was wondering what's going on over there.
The lot's not that small, but the house is.
It's a lot of yard, it's a small.
It's a little. So. We wanted to show, we are composing a second story on top of the brick house as well as joining the garage on the house with an addition. And we're showing this drawing. All of the wooden houses are already two-story and the purple shaded lots are single-story houses. And that's both, there's a lot of two-story houses here on Platt and then also on Mulberry. So it's going to fit right in as a two-story. This is to show the existing. So. This is the nineteen fifty brick ranch, it's a brick veneer. And this is the front facing Platt, this is facing Mulberry. This has already been taken down, we've got a dental permit for that. And this is the view here of how we would bridge the house and garage. And then the rest of the information we do have. So we wanted to go over the site plan. They're not requesting any variances for setbacks or area, everything is compliant. We're showing, this is the existing ranch. And then here is the new portion that joins it to the garage. We're showing a large gravel area on the side here. It is within, I think it's required that it be fifty feet from the corner and it's eighty-four feet until the entry at the driveway. Driveway width is eighteen feet, which is the maximum width. And then we've got the outdoor compressors over here. And we're going with the existing septic, which was already for a three-bedroom house, which this will be after the renovation.
Excuse me, one second. Why, why do they have to be here? The building is now on historic basis, but it's not in the bubble yet. They haven't, the building hasn't approved. There are four major projects on the corner of that, on that corner, and we've seen none of them.
I understand that, Chair. What happened is the new overlay district has been approved at the state level. And if you read how the code is written for the historic district overlay, anything that's been approved by the state is subject to the historic overlay district.
Okay, then there are across from her about three houses being totally torn apart and we haven't seen them at all.
So they filed before anything was approved and technically that's not demolition. Ken went through it, Justin went through it.
Through the buildings, they get their front torches, they're totally redesigned.
So the one on the corner, the one on the corner went through. The one next to them will be in front of this board at the next meeting.
Polite House on the corner.
Got building permits and Ken, Justin both signed off saying it was not demolition. And, but their, their neighbor will be in front of this board, I believe, at the next meeting.
And the one that just got the third house down?
I'm not aware of the third house.
There's major destruction and construction going on.
I'm only aware of the second house, Chair.
The next one is being done now too?
Um, if you can get me a number, Chair, I can check on it.
Sorry, sorry about this, but I, I feel the same way. I don't think that this should be before the board. And everything that I, I, we've been discussing this at the comprehensive plan meeting of how to handle, if you're not aware, the Platt Avenue and some of the other streets have been put on the national estate register, but they haven't been incorporated into the historic district, according to the, no, it's more.
So my suggestion is to go back and to read all the letters from our liaison trustee slating concerning the historic district. This is what we are being told by the planning zoning attorneys and from trustee slating. That because this has been approved at the state level, it is subject to our historic district requirements.
In what way? I mean, the geld house is being totally constructed, they're doing all kinds of things back there that we haven't approved.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, we did. Oh, we did approve that, okay.
Well, the problem is, and I've talked a bloody about this, it was a trustee, is that the code was written for the historic district that was previously per, based on a historic survey. And so something like what you're proposing on this building, which seems perfectly reasonable to me and would be a big improvement, my perspective, doesn't really fit within the standards of the code because it wasn't designed for a building like this. The standards were built for, designed for buildings that were pre-war buildings. And it doesn't take into effect post-war buildings that are different in scale and have a lot of difference.
Higher building is a ranch from the sixties or seventies, it's not even in the category. I don't even recall what, I haven't looked at what they wrote when they expanded the district that Albany and Washington DC approved beyond the historic register. And now four of these buildings have been totally torn apart and we haven't seen any of it. And so we're halfway in, I don't know where we are. I, I don't think, I don't know why they're here.
I want to speak out of line, but I do wonder if you propose that since we're here and it sounds like there's a lot of ambiguity, maybe you just go through the presentation so you have the information and then in case it's required.
Right. I was gonna win. I didn't want you to go so far down the line and then tell us.
Because one of these things is a partial demolition of a historic structure. And that also, we don't need to do that if it's not, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer and.
The demolition board chairs, they're adding a second floor. So obviously they have to cut or demolish a section of the roof to build a second floor on there.
I understand that, but.
Well, my hope was that you might be able to approve it without a public hearing because we also got signatures from two neighbors nearby saying they reviewed it and don't have a problem with it. And now it's even more reason to.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about knocking down a part of a nineteen sixties or seventies building.
However, if you read the law, what it says that we're supposed to do is whenever possible, structures listed as contributing buildings, which this may be, as the nine inch check was fixed before the historic building introduction, shall be retained and their exterior historic features shall not be significantly altered. And so you're proposing something that dramatically alters this building, taking out building the windows, putting in new windows, second story, new materials. How can we justify doing that, being consistent with the law? Even though, my perspective, what you're doing is reasonable and would improve the value and appearance of that house.
But in a way, these aren't historic features because they didn't exist pre nineteen thirties. So we'd be allowing the demolition of things that weren't historic, so just.
What if we done something?
We have a criteria for pretty much close enough.
Do we know what Neil Lawson said about this?
No, maybe.
I don't have, unfortunately.
But it's at home. I don't. I think unfortunately, because our liaison is not here and the applicant is here, the planning board can hear the applicant out, you guys can table this to the next meeting. And I think the most productive way to keep things moving is to have the planning zoning attorney present at the next meeting to go through this and to go through what it all means as a planning board and what you guys consider based on the historic district.
Would that be the public hearing then? Because I don't want to come back for a lot of meetings just to figure out whether or not, I'd rather go straight to a public meeting and.
Couldn't, couldn't council issue a memo if that would just say, well, if you adult private that meeting? We could still have that conversation about procedure for future applications, but it was determined we didn't need to do this. Wouldn't the applicant just be off the hook by virtue of that memo?
That's more of a legal question, I think, for the planning zoning attorney. I, I think what nobody doesn't want is either this board getting sued or the applicant getting sued, or the applicant being drawn back in here because some neighbor says, wait a minute, I was under the understanding that it was written this way and why are they allowed?
We allowed the South Street property at the church to be knocked down because we deemed it was built in the nineteen eighties. We looked at the book there, thinking we didn't have.
You have all the public hearings for that.
We had public hearings, but which ones?
All of them.
Yeah, we have a public hearing for demolition of a.
You had one for South Street?
Yeah, the question is.
I remember writing.
Yeah, the question is, is this a historic building under the code? I don't think it is, but I, I, you know, I'm not the final word on this.
If it didn't exist when the historic buildings' dates were set, it can't possibly be a historic building.
But it was reset, Mike, in twenty twenty.
I understand that, but the, the date they were historic from was pre-World War II, isn't it?
No.
Doesn't matter now. They changed the dates. That's what I thought, it was still set.
They say that state law requires, not requires, suggests that any building fifty years or older may be considered the historic district. Neil Lawson, who was hired to do this in twenty eighteen nineteen, said, well, all buildings before nineteen fifty should be added to the register.
Nineteen seventy. Nineteen seventy, wasn't it?
Nineteen seventy, yeah. Fifty years older, nineteen seventy, without consideration to the May part. And they put the Valero gas station in there and so other things because they were built before nineteen seventy and the May was not considered by the guy that did this and thought it through. There are some strange modern buildings listed as being contributing buildings, which should not have been done.
Understood.
But to be polite, we're gonna have to hash this out. So you can go ahead and make your presentation and we'll give you a comment as, as we can.
Okay, so I just wanted to point out the compressor here, the propane tank here is in the proper setback and the proper distance from any windows as well. We're doing a new front path to an entry porch off of Platt and then side entrance that's going to be less important off of.
And the additions will be screened from the street on the left side of that building?
Yes, this can have, by landscaping screened. This is the existing. Existing runways, sauce, basement pan. And there's a first floor pan where you can see the new connection between the house and the garage. And then relaying out the interior to have larger rooms. And then addition of the second floor, we have two bedrooms, a bathroom and a study. And we did a facade, so we did read through the requirements and went with a painted clavard finish above the brick and a clear demarcation between that and the brick. We kept divided lights with a vertical proportion, metal roofs and the importance of the front entry porch. Anything you want to add?
No, then we signed in those, but that continues what you said with the vertical proportion.
Yeah, this is a larger, it's keeping the same proportion but blowing it up for this last walkway between.
So what are the, these are like lower ceiling windows here?
Yeah, it's a sliding, a three panel slider. So the middle one opens and then the other two are stationary.
What's going on here, are these steps, what are these?
Yeah, that's steps out onto the gravel area from the middle.
Now likewise, this is a single door here.
That's going to be a wooden door, traditional wooden door.
Now, this is, this is the Mulberry's could do. Yes.
To take advantage of looking at that great parking lot across the street.
What's the, sorry, go back. Is this all parking area here? What's all this going on here?
It's gravel, there's, we're trying to use as much parking as we can. So we'll be able to park in the garage, have a car here and then maybe like one more here for just, because most families have more than two cars.
Yeah.
And you can't park on the street here, so we're just trying to make it practical.
It seems like a lot of driveway need.
Yeah.
So there's no parking there, so there's my wife's car, my car and our daughter's car?
Well, there's, there's street parking in front, but, and, and I'm just saying, you can still park three cars in there and have less, less driveway. But, you know, that's much greater than three cars.
Yeah, but we're also making it symmetrical about the main entry, side entry, and we wanted kind of that rock garden look. It's not going to look like a driveway, it's gonna be peystone and we can have planters on it. It's gonna look more like a court than a park than a driveway.
They can't park on the street during the winter too.
Right, I know you can, that's, and we were. But it's just more space than you need for three cars. If you want to show planters and show it as a design courtyard, that's different. That you occasionally park or sometimes park a car on. But that seems excessive for three cars. Because you can park one in the garage, one out in front of the garage and one to the south without what looks to be more like, you know, fifteen feet and twenty-five feet long. So. A landscaped side yard would be better than a driveway side yard. But that was the only comment I had, you know? But when, if indeed the attorneys tell us that we have to consider this a historic house, you are changing the character completely from the historic house. It's no longer a brick ranch with a picture window and a little flat cross cable and something that I can't get my head around because it's historic in any way. And turning it into sort of a colonial shape with nice windows and, you know, bare windows. But it's completely altering the theoretical historic character of that village and that building. And I don't know how to reconcile that with our, with our law that says we're supposed to retain the historic character. So if this is, if that building is historic the way it is, how can we expand it the way you want to, make it livable and nice looking and still retain the historic character of that brick ranch? and still retain the historic character of that brick ranch? That doesn't have any distinguishing architectural features.
Arguably, it's the uglyst house in the village that has been abandoned and not lived in for years. And this is a really nice upgrade plan.
Right, then, why don't we follow the rules for now? We can cancel it tomorrow. And we schedule a public hearing on November 15th for a partial demolition permit of a historic structure. In the meantime, the next day or two, we can get the attorney to rule on it, Lydia to comment on it. I have... Senator Betsworth sent me Neil Lawson's complete print of it. Did I send it to everybody? And why, it probably can't, because he sent me the 500 sets of photographs too, as well as this giant report, which is the new houses plus the old houses reevaluated with some... And maybe Ryan and Jeff can show me how a Google Drive works and I can put it there and then you can retrieve it. I'd like to see what it says about Perdido Platte Avenue. It took us all the time to find it.
And the... These areas here, so the existing garage is 365, this thing, house 12, the addition. So, all of this here, then, I presumably would make up the coverage. These three...
Not the second floor.
No, not the second floor. No, just the first three. Just the first three. And so, that's your total coverage, and that's within the footprint coverage allowance for the size of the lot.
I believe that is.
I'm sure I can...
I saw that on there. Calculating.
You can start with Lawson's. You can do the calculation and let us know.
We're not actually adding anything that wasn't already there. Apparently, according to two of the neighbors, there used to be a connection between the garage and the house. I don't believe it.
Maybe, but it's not there now, right?
I know. Well, someone may have photos of it, have it around, but we don't.
We just can't prove anything that's greater than 30% building coverage.
Yes, of course.
And so, just do the calculation. I'm sure you have enough green space there in that lot, and it's not 30%. You don't have to count the driveway.
Yeah, but this is the lot. You're killing your tip back here.
Yeah.
Right, that's not a very big parcel. Well, it's 11,000, so... Yeah, 60 square feet. And what do those things total?
Eighteen ninety plus 300, eighteen ninety...
Sorry, Captain, did you say that again?
Eighteen ninety, I mean, 365 plus 1245 plus 294.
5%, 5.5%?
5% coverage?
It's 12,000 square feet. Looks like... I mean, looks like it's less than 30, but 5%? Did I do that wrong? Let me have the numbers again.
365 plus 1245 plus 294.
Plus 1245.
294.
Plus 1245 plus...
294.
294. About 1904. 16%. Well, the other interesting thing is, it's determined and concluded that this is in the historic district. The front setback in the historic district is not 25. It's max 25, minimum 15, isn't it?
It's, I think, 10 to 25.
Okay, well, actually, nothing's gonna matter anyway because there's no... Forget that.
Yeah, it's existing building.
Yeah.
So, why don't we schedule a public hearing on a demolition permit on November 15th? We can speak to the attorney, we can make a decision the next day or two to let you know, and then we can just do site plan approval on the 15th and not have to have the public hearing.
We have added second floors to historic buildings. But they at least retain the first floor character.
This would be even uglier with two floors of brick.
Now, I'm not saying it has to be brick. I'm just saying that if indeed we have to abide by the code and retain the historic character of the original brick building, we may have to at least acknowledge the existing window pattern on the ground floor.
Yeah, I guess that's my question, though. Do we have to acknowledge that and ask for more of it? Or do we have to apply pre-1930s window standards as written in the code, which are quite thoroughly articulated?
Well, that's the problem, is the code is designed for post-1930 building.
Right, until we have 1950, 67.
When I talked to Lydia, the village trustee, she said that they weren't considering putting these buildings on plan into the historic district until they changed the code so that we'd be able to deal with that.
But I think that narrative has changed.
Oh, that narrative has changed.
So, while you're not here tonight, we were... So, also, John, there's numbers nine and 10.
That used to be the garage.
It was?
Yes.
So, where are we at? We're just gonna...
We're gonna schedule a public hearing.
And we want a regular setback.
See if we have to have that. If we're not, it's by the end of the week, we never have to do this. Yep?
All right, thank you.
So, I'll just... We're gonna take a motion.
To have a public hearing, right?
Yes, we have a motion on public hearing on...
Would you provide this month or in December?
This month.
November 15th. November 15th for Perdido Platte Avenue. You have a motion.
Don't make that motion.
A second.
A second, yeah.
All in favor, aye. We're gonna figure this out. Thank you. At least I have... Catherine, it'll hold time.
Can you email me?
The signatures?
The two neighbors?
Yeah.
And their support letters?
Yes.
I'll find out more tomorrow, maybe before I'm done.
The shorty had a very Google Drive, and I can post...
I think we're gonna give you a file.
I have a report and Neil Lawson's photo, which I have on there.
Which one should we start with?
Oh, I might as well do a...
I understand you have a PET scan and a CAT scanner in the parking lot, and you know people could get wet going to get those scans.
Exactly. My name's Ash Garberts. I work at Hopkins Architecture, and we're working with New Benson and Northern Baptist Hospital. And they're proposing to bring in a temporary CT trailer with a temporary connector in this interior corridor to the north of Northern Baptist Hospital, the main entrance. This was the addition, I'm sorry, what do you have? And this is the new kind of office that comes off of...
So, this is all the way to the back?
This is all the way to the back.
Alleyway that has...
Correct.
There used to be a surgery center across the street, I remember it.
In fact, Thompson House is right here, but it's just a little bit.
Have you been losing parking spots?
This is actually a service courtyard, and right now, there's different things back there that they're gonna move their temporary items. So, this is just a paved area. There's parking along here that's not being affected. And there's ample backup space, or required backup space to the trailer. As far as the view shed, if you go to the next sheet, which is C... One of them, please.
101.
Yep. This is actually an aerial with the superimposed property line on it. And we've even indicated the new shed of that corner. And it's blocked by all the existing development that occurs here, the tree line back here, this building, and Thompson House.
You can actually get from anywhere.
That's not a problem. And everything is a temporary nature. And if and when the CT trailer is no longer necessary, the trailer will move out and the connector will be taken. And there'll be massive proportions.
I think this is... No, Brandon. I don't have any questions. I don't have any questions about this.
No, it didn't affect any parking. It's not visible.
We just need to schedule a public hearing for the special use permit.
What do you do?
Yep.
And then is there a recommendation that needs to be made by the board for the ZVA?
That was for the board to consider. If the area variance is needed.
Is necessary?
Well, why would there be an area variance again?
It's a temporary structure. That doesn't matter if foundations or fittings are...
So, wheels. Ken's... So, Ken's outlook chair was, you can call it temporary, but as soon as it's built, it's built.
I know that.
So, he never sees anything as temporary. He looks at it as a permanent structure. Because once it's built, it's harder to convince them to tear it down than it is to do anything else. So, because the hospital technically is not in its own zoning district, it's in the residential district? And it's... Is it correct, John, a legal non-performing location?
I guess so, yeah. It's subject to a bunch of area variances over the years, but this may doesn't seem to need areas.
All right, so if the board agrees, then all you need to do is a special use permit.
We did so much work on revising the code to create a hospital, because then they dropped it. The hospital dropped it. I mean, we're ready to know this, and we've done a lot of work for months.
So, I guess if we need a special permit, we should schedule a public hearing for the 15th, and...
No one will come.
Try to get you early on the agenda so you don't have to wait all this time.
Public hearing's always first.
Why would we have the house for...
Public hearing's we always do first, when we're first talking agenda.
Is that November 15th?
Just mean a motion to the record.
How should John set the public hearing for the 15th?
On the second, Mike.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, John. And a potential circle for that. Once the public hearing is made, is that when you would actually vote on the...
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, the leaded formal motion to move our... Did we vote to move it from the 15th to the 22nd, and we have to unvote to move it back to the 15th? Or is it still scheduled?
Only for procedure. This doesn't involve... It won't involve you, Patrick. Procedurely, if you guys want to make a motion to return the planning board meeting for November 15th instead of November 22nd...
I'll make the motion.
I'll say that.
All in favor, aye.
You have a question? And the documents that are on file right now or the C documents that will be for the public hearing, I don't need to submit anything for...
No.
John, thank you very much. Enjoy your evening.
Thanks, Patrick. Anything else? I do. I'll be right back. David Miller Chair, Village of Rhinebeck Planning Board, 76th Martin Street, are referring to the hub mixed-use building, 6376 Mill Street, Rhinebeck. Extension request to your Chair, Mr. Miller, and members of the planning board. As you are aware, this firm represents 6384 Mill Street LLC in the above referenced matter. On December 15th, 2020, the Village of Rhinebeck Planning Board approved resolution granting site plan approval for a mixed-use lodging and retail facility at 6376 Mill Street. As there are several conditions of approval that have not yet been met, we are requesting a one-year extension. A one-year extension was previously granted on November 16th, 2021. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions regarding the foregoing. Sincerely, Victoria L. Polidoro, of Roadhouse Chair, Shell and Volvo.
Then we have a problem not extending it for another year.
Can I ask, did they change this from a hotel to residential, or did that...
They have not come back to do that yet, John.
They've had a conversation with people, but nothing official.
Nothing official. The biggest issue that they've been dealing with is the stormwater issue in the back. Pagi, I believe they're on their fourth design right now, and they're working with Time Bond.
Everything is alike, every time is a progress.
Yeah, yeah. No, they gotta fix it. I don't know how, but they gotta fix it. I'll make a motion to approve the one-year extension.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye.
But they never came in to change that from hotel to residential?
Nope, nope.
It's still in flux.
Go back, go back to hotel.
No.
Anybody else have anything else to say?
On the coney variance, the last line, talk about... The first sentence in the last line said removing the shed. And the other, the last part of the sentence was, "Now they don't have to remove the shed."
You got that up? I thought I read it as they didn't need the shed anymore.
I had the same thing, and then I reread it in it.
I'm confused, so why are we gonna bring it up?
Yeah.
It just should be worded so it's clear that the shed is removed.
Yeah, I remember tripping on the sentences too.
Yeah. It was a little weird, because at first I thought it meant that they were to keep the shed. And I said, "No, that's not right." But then I read it again, and I think it's written such that it says, "The shed is no longer needed now that they have the garage," or "will have garage."
So, if you guys want to play around with the wording for that, that's fine.
At least it's off 4,7.
So, here's the sentence.
He actually said "God", why do you care anymore?
It's World Series.
Is it the one?
I was...
Oh! I guess the nephew would add it.
Yeah, I have the sentence here, if you want to hear it.
Oh, baseball fan.
So, it says, "Also, by removing the existing shed, it will no longer impact the rear yard setback for the new septic disposal system. And the new proposed garage's size will allow for not needing to replace the shed."
That makes sense.
So, I take that as bigger garage, no longer need a shed.
Right.
Therefore, shed goes away and doesn't need to be in the setback anymore. Right?
I think it's okay.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yes.
You guys have time to chew on it more, fine.
I think it's good as it is. We don't need to chew.
Thank you for that, Karen.
We have a motion to adjourn. We'll make that motion.
I'll second you.
All in favor, aye. You.